Thank you. Tonight, we're here for a budget work session. And I'd just like to preface this by saying that the way we're going to do this tonight, the department heads are here to discuss the proposed budget. But I'd like my colleagues on the council to hold your questions until the end of all the presentations, and then we'll ask our questions, unless, of course, there's just a clarification or something like that. And so now I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you very much. Tonight's our first budget work session, and I first want to thank residents who came to the open house that we just had in the hydrangea room. We had some very good conversations. I appreciate that. One of the things that people may not quite be aware of with the city council, city manager, form of government, is that the preparation of the budget is a collaborative approach. It's not an adversarial one. As the employee of the council, it's my job to listen to your priorities and get the sense from you about what you think is best for your constituents as a group, and then compare knowledge of the needs of the different departments, the rules under which we work, with city code, state and federal law, collective bargaining agreements, and best practices to put forward a budget. It takes us a long time, and it's going to take the council a long time to go through these numbers, and we appreciate your attention. We're going to go through the budget details of more in detail than I did in my presentation last week, and I'm happy to turn this over to deputy city manager Jason Damweber to run through the presentation for this evening. Jason.
Thank you, Ms. Lublo. Last Wednesday, the presentation was -- I'm trying to -- the presentation is not moving forward. Oh, there we go. See if that works. Last Wednesday, the presentation was a high-level overview of the budget that focused on the different fund summaries and the tax rate. In tonight's presentation, we're going to dive a little bit deeper into what's planned in each of the departmental areas and what major capital work is planned in fiscal year 20, as is proposed in the fiscal year 20 recommended budget. In addition to the city manager and me, you'll also hear from a few members of the senior leadership team and the housing and community development managers, and you'll also have an opportunity to ask questions about the work that they're doing. And if the city manager, I can't speak to that, they're here and can speak to the things that they're doing in their departments themselves. So starting off with the personnel overview, as was discussed last week, there is a slight increase in the number of FTEs, and that is because we are planning to change two half-time positions to full-time positions, and we're adding some hours to a position in the Arts and Humanities Division in HCD. It's worth noting that about 100 FTEs in the city's budget are funded through tax dollars if you net out positions that are paid for or offset through special revenues that we receive. Just for example, of the $8.6 million Police Department budget, less than half of the funds come from the general fund. And when I refer to the general fund, I'm essentially saying tax dollars to the city. About $4.1 million comes from the county and the state. Another example is in communications. In communications and IT, several of those positions are funded through franchise payments that we receive to the city from cable providers rather than funded through tax dollars. You saw this table last week, and as we discussed then, we've seen increases in the cost to provide the level of services that we provide. The vast majority of our budget is spent on personnel, as is typical in municipal governments. We provide services, and the most important asset that we have to provide those services are the people who provide them. You know, they need the tools and equipment in order to do that, but over time and on an annual basis, the tools and equipment are less expensive to the city, to taxpayers and other stakeholders than the people who provide those services. Over time, as we have had to add FTEs and increase wages to remain -- we've had to increase wages to remain market competitive, it's worth noting, and I've mentioned this during the budget open house and to a few council members, that we recently learned that the county's unionized employees are going to be receiving increases at percentages slightly higher than what we are proposing in fiscal year 20 for the city. And through an unscientific survey, the city manager and I corresponded with a number of other managers in Maryland, and what we're proposing is about consistent, if anything, on the lower end of the increases that are happening in other municipalities whose managers we spoke into. This matters right now because we're experiencing, according to NPR, a story that I heard the other morning, one of the tightest labor markets in the history of the country. So the market right now is good for people who are looking for work and not as good for people trying to find people to do the work for them. Looking at general fund expenditures, you can see that costs have gone up since fiscal year 16 pretty much across the board. The greatest growth has been in the Police Department, which is the result mostly of organizational changes, which were made largely geared toward community policing. Significantly more notable than that are capital outlay costs, which have risen dramatically due to three major projects in particular: the Ethan Allen Gateway Project, the Flower Avenue-Green Street Project, and the library construction project. Once completed, once all these projects are completed, these will decrease unless we continue to add major capital projects. And this is kind of hard to see, but it's a breakdown of our non-departmental expenditures. The greatest expenses there are bundled into when we talk about the general fund personnel expenditures. It includes these, and workers' compensation is about $600,000 of our total personnel expenditures. This table shows debt service beginning in the current fiscal year, what we expect to pay moving forward. We have capital outlay costs that we pay annually, and that is while we are doing the work, that's paying the big dollars that are required to get the work done. And the debt service reflects the money that we owe to people who are organizations that we have borrowed money from. And you can see that over the next several years, it's slightly -- next year, it'll actually, it's expected to be a little bit lower before it jumps back up again, and then it's a pretty gradual decline over time. Again, this could change if we have to incur more debt for capital costs or other expenses where we have to borrow money. Now, I'm going to kind of go through each of the departmental areas and speak to a little -- a few of the highlights in each of the areas. General Government covers the council, the city manager's office, the city clerk's office, finance, HR, and IT. Am I missing anybody there? I think so. Okay. The general government budget includes funds for racial equity training for a group of boards, commissions, and committee members, and also, we're going to be sending five staff members to participate beginning in the fall in a regional cohort that's being put on by the Metropolitan Washington Councils of Government in collaboration with GARE, the Government Alliance for Race and Equity, and we're members of both of those. It includes funds for staff member -- a council member and staff conferences and association memberships. We are members of the Maryland Municipal League, the Metro Washington Cog, and a number of other organizations that we pay annual dues to and receive benefits in a number of ways through our partnerships and participation in those organizations. This year, our expenses are going up by about $10,000 for our Cog membership because we have to contribute funds towards a regional public safety fund that was previously grant-funded, and now the expenses for that fund are being divided up amongst the partnering jurisdictions in Cog based on their population size. We have continued funding for legislative advocacy at both the state and county levels in the proposed budget, Montgomery County -- I'm sorry, Montgomery College scholarships. We have funds to continue to provide legal services through the city attorney's office, and also, we're required to have third-party financial audits each year, and those come at a cost of about $40,000 a year, if I remember correctly. The only new funds in general government is for an enterprise content management system. That totaled about $20,000, and in the long run, we believe that spending that money in the next year will help us to realize some savings where we'll be able to discontinue some disparate systems that we have that could -- that one less expensive system could take the place of. And there's no proposal for any new FTEs in any of the divisions within general government. As I noted before, the Police Department is the department in the city with the largest budget, but it's also worth noting that over half of the funds for the Police Department that provide for our expenses are provided from sources other than tax dollars, other than the general fund. We get about $2.5 million in tax duplication payments. That's the in lieu of police line there, and then the police rebate from the county. While the police rebate from the county has gone up slightly, from last year to this year, the tax duplication payment has remained the same for how many years, city manager?
Well, we got a little bump up after one decline, but especially for police, the amount that was budgeted for police was based on the expenses and wages from 2000 for the Montgomery County government.
And at the same time, the police budget for the county has dramatically increased. So in the Police Department, we're going to continue to develop and hone programs that improve trust and cooperation with the community to improve quality of life for all residents with a focus on outreach and education, especially under the leadership of the now relatively new police chief. We've made really good strides towards aligning the organization to better provide community-oriented policing. We're going to collaborate with the county and other municipalities to prepare for emergencies through the use of training grants, and we hope to actually finally make some headway on mutual aid agreements. The chief can speak more to that. We have a proposal, and the proposed budget includes increasing a -- what's currently budgeted at a half-time position in neighborhood services team for parking enforcement, increasing that to a full-time position. We expect that revenues realized through increased enforcement will more than offset the additional costs associated with the position. I don't remember the exact numbers off the top of my head, but I think at a half-time position with wages and benefits, we're budgeting in the ballpark of $35,000. If we bring that up to full-time, it goes up to about $66,000. But commensurate with that increase from the half-time to the full-time position, we expect to realize well over $100,000 in new revenues from parking fees. And if the new parking enforcement officer is anywhere as good as a previous one that we've had, it will be significantly more than that, and we will have high expectations of that person. Chief DeVal, would you mind speaking a little bit to the steps that are -- have been taken and are going to be taken in the Police Department to align personnel better with the goals of the council?
There was some back nois when I turned it on when you were speaking. What we've done and what I talked about last year was realigning the Police Department for better service delivery, both internally and externally. So what we've done is we've repurposed a captain's position, and we created a deputy chief position to have a clearly defined number two. We went from three divisions to now two divisions. So now, instead of having a chief and three captains, we now have a chief, a deputy chief, and two captains. We also created lieutenants positions. There was a disparity in the rank structure. We went from chief to captain, and the next rank down was sergeant. We didn't have any lieutenants in our rank structure. So when I came in to the Police Department, I took a comprehensive look at what I thought our service delivery, both internally and externally, could improve. So overall, we've increased the Police Department since I've been here by one FTE, and that was the Community Police and Officer, which we're actively trying to fill that. We want to make sure we get a quality person for that position. But the most of the restructuring was done by restructuring other positions, and that's how we feel like we're finally in a position now where structurally we can be efficient both internally and externally.
Thank you, chief. And just again, the senior leadership team members and members of the HCD management team will be available at the end of the presentation to respond to any questions you might have. Moving on to Public Works, some of the big things going on in Public Works, we're going to be continuing to -- the proposed budget assumes that we're going to be continuing to provide all the services that we're currently providing. We have a number of smaller capital projects, like the community center construction, including work in the Police Department that would close in the atrium area right here, providing more potential area for public space on the main level of the community center. And we'll also be doing work in the lobby in the Police Department that provides much more space for the dispatch offices, which are extremely cramped right now. We also have some funds in the budget for needed third-floor improvements to better utilize some space up there. We're going to be doing a number of stormwater and sustainability projects, which I'll ask Ms. Braithwaite to speak to in a moment. We're also going to be spending considerable amount of staff time, as we have so far, working to develop them, but also implementing new administrative regulations associated with the cell tower ordinance. Right now, it's really hard to tell how much staff time that will take because the applications have not yet started to pour in. Maybe they won't pour in, but it remains to be seen. And we'll be speaking at the end of the presentation about two of the major capital projects that are adding significant expense to the fiscal year 20 budget. That's the Flower Avenue-Green Street Project and the library. Ms. Braithwaite, could you speak a little bit to some of the stormwater projects and sustainability projects we're going to be working on?
Let me start with stormwater. We have several sources of project development. I had available this evening for folks and can make available to you our five -- it's actually six-year look ahead for capital projects within the stormwater fund. So we've identified a list of planned projects, and that list identification comes from the public, it comes from our own staff, just comes from us working to manage the stormwater programs in the city. So these are the capital projects, and this year, we're looking to start a major project on the Tacoma Branch stream, which is the outfall below Poplar Avenue and Fourth Avenue at Ligo Mill, Poplar Mill. It's a two-phase project because of the extent of it and the cost of it. We are actively and have been for years seeking grant funds and so far unsuccessful, so we're proceeding with that project ourselves. We also have a failing outfall at that location, so we do need to take some emergency measures, which will be included in the first-phase project. We've also got the bioretention facilities planned for Granton Holly. That project has been on our list for several years and keeps getting bumped because it's not urgent, and then we have new urgent issues that pop up, like this year. We bumped a few projects that were on the schedule and instead did a project at Second Avenue in Allegheny, which is just wrapping up, New York Avenue and Baltimore Avenue, which is close to wrapping up, and a few others. So we always have a plan, and then reality sort of works its way through our process. We've got several facilities that we're going to be building on Lincoln Avenue, some associated with providing treatment required for the new sidewalk that is currently under installation, and others, in addition to that. This has been a kind of a good way to do a project in that we got feedback from the residents about stormwater problems that they were experiencing all through the planning process for the sidewalks, so we were able to develop a stormwater program in tandem with that to address not only the required treatment, but also address and hopefully solve some of those longstanding historic erosion problems and stormwater problems on Lincoln Avenue. And then we have a project at Manor Circle and Carroll, which is a longstanding problem that needs to be addressed, and with the increasing rainfall and underground springs there, it's created quite an issue with icing and sidewalk safe passage. In addition to those projects, we also have for our stormwater budget, the usual work that we do with outfall testing, general system maintenance, video pipe inspection and cleaning of the system. So those things all happen outside of the Capitol stormwater budget, but are a major part of the efforts through the year. The big projects related to sustainability, we actually did some reductions in the overall sustainability budget, and this year, it's reflected in its own standalone budget within Public Works. In the past, it had been combined with the administrative budget, but an effort to help people identify the sustainability costs and see what was specifically planned. We called it out now in a separate budget code within Public Works. The key thing that we're currently involved in now and will roll into the end of October is the updating our Sustainable Energy Action Plan. That proved a pivotal kickoff point for the city's sustainability efforts by having first done that plan in 2014. That's when we hired a sustainability manager. She had a list of 17 goals to go for, and go for it she has, and so we're hoping that this next iteration of the Sustainability Action Plan will actually expand a bit to include resiliency planning. We were able to contract with a very qualified firm through the council of governments. I think the council might remember recently awarding that contract, so they're hopefully will be coming up and talking to you about that soon. So we're hoping to get that project started shortly with a fairly quick turnaround. There'll be public outreach and education campaigns and input campaigns that'll happen in tandem with that. I don't know if I covered everything?
You could go on for hours, but I think you've covered the big items. Thanks, Ms. Braithwaite. Moving on to recreation, we plan to continue enhancing what we offer in terms of programs, especially those geared toward youth and seniors. We've got a new volleyball program that's going to be kicking off, pickleball, which Mr. Clark can tell us what that is when he comes up in a minute, because I have no idea what it is actually. Competitive gaming, which is really getting a lot of interest and play, and apparently our competitive gaming team is doing very well. And a number of success fairs, and those are being done in partnership with other divisions and departments across the city, including the Police Department, the Economic Development Management Division, and HCD. We'll continue to develop partnerships and maintain the ones that we have and establish new ones so that we can continue to utilize the network of talent that we have in the city and surrounding the city. Continue to work with the Recreation Committee, friends of the Tacoma Park Rec Center and community members to develop a vision for the new Recreation Center, what we hope will be a new Recreation Center. That's something that's also being worked on in tandem between a number of divisions within the city, including Economic Development, Management, and Planning, and the rec department, and Public Works. And I actually could name a few others. The proposed budget also includes funds to continue the special events that we have hosted or contributed to in the past, including the Monster Bash, Egg Hunt, Celebrate Tacoma, outdoor movies, and various sports programs. We hope to expand our marketing materials for certain programs to reach a broader audience of our diverse community. And we're going to implement a new module within our registration software to help streamline registration for staff and make it easier for the end user. And as an end user, I appreciate that. In addition, so this is something new. In addition, the proposed budget includes slight fee increases for some recreation programs and classes. The fee for aftercare was increased five years ago, and the fees for all of our other program services camps haven't increased in about 12 years. So it's time. As somebody who has one of my kids, and two, in summer camp, it is a steal, and I personally have no problem paying an extra 10% higher than what we pay right now. I was really shocked to learn that those prices have remained stagnant for over a decade as well, so the time is right to increase those. And the proposed increases for recreation programs and camps that are being proposed will increase our revenue by close to $100,000, we expect. Greg?
I just want to make one note that one of the things is that our scholarship program continues. So if somebody has a financial issue, we still -- and they're a city resident, we still work with them.
Correct, yeah. Mr. Clark, did you want to speak to some of the new things that the rec department is doing? And if nothing else, explain to me what pickleball is?
First of all, pickleball is a game that's played inside. It's sort of -- it's very similar to tennis, but it's played with a wooden paddle and a ball that bounces, sort of like a tennis ball, and you sort of play tennis inside in a gym.
Okay, I've seen that. Now I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah. It's very popular, especially it's popular among seniors, so actually, we have some seniors that play it at the Recreation Center on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We have some very exciting things that's taking place in the rec department, most of which was mentioned earlier, but a few that I would like to point out, which our youth success and our team programming, we are putting a heavy emphasis on programs and opportunities for that group. Our staff, especially Javonte McDonald, has taken upon himself to meet a lot of residents and community members, go out to different buildings and develop relationships and partnerships. We are actually proposing to take a program, actually increase our program at Hillwood Manor, which is in, I believe, Ward Five, Ward Six. I apologize, it's in Ward Six. We are proposing to actually increase all of our outreach for youth and teens through our Youth Success Initiative. So he's actually developed relationships with resident managers on Maple Avenue, which has programs in different buildings across the city. He's actually proposing to start a mentorship program at the Tacoma Park Middle School. We actually had a mentorship program there a few years ago, which was started by Lou McAllister, which has been -- we haven't had it in the past three or four years. He's going to resurrect that program, and not only -- previously, it was for young men only, and he has someone that's going to mentor young ladies as well. So that's a program that he'll be having, and that'll take place during lunch up there for the young people. We're also providing a -- we have a sort of a theme of leadership and career building that we're that we're going, that's going to take place within our teen and young adults program. So, that's going to be an area of focus where we're doing success fairs, as well as job fairs and a lot of job prep for young people in that area. And that actually leads to our youth, our Summer Youth Employment Program, which we are still operating. We actually are up to approximately fourteen young people in that program. We're still searching for businesses. But with that program, we try and make sure that we get a mix of Tacoma Park residents, young Tacoma Park residents, and that some folks that need a little bit more assistance than others, some that are doing okay, and there's other young people that are doing really well. So, we try to get a good mix to go with our racial equity thing in the city. And something that I'm really excited about for our seniors is we had, two years ago, we started offering a senior camp, which will be continuing, but this year we'll be offering another senior camp, which will be in partnership with Docs in Progress. So, that'll be an additional camp for our senior population. So, those are just some of the exciting things that we have. We have a STEAM camp that's coming up as well, that we'll be providing for our young people, you know, amongst other things, so.
So, I keep hitting the wrong button. Moving to housing and community development, boy, this is another one of the areas in the city where a lot is going to be going on in fiscal year twenty and beyond. We hope to really get to work advancing the Housing and Economic Development Goals as determined by Council through the implementation of the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan. As you all know, we've discussed the recommendations therein, and the next step is going to be for Council to tell us which one of the, which ones of the recommendations, or what from the report they want the city to begin, the city staff to begin working to implement. We want to, we will continue encouraging the preservation and development of a diverse range of quality and affordable housing for all, providing tenant landlord relations assistance, and providing support for housing associations. We will continue to facilitate the redevelopment of the Tacoma Junction site. We hope to complete the Public Land and Open Space Management Plan for your consideration. There are a number of bikeway improvements planned, and the city mostly funded through grants, which is great, in particular along Ethan Allen in New Hampshire. We will, one of the Council's priorities is to explore Vision Zero Initiative. We're doing a lot that is aligned with that initiative, and we look forward to exploring other things that we can do to further the goals aligned with Vision Zero. And we've got the census coming up, and our staff actually plays a role in monitoring and assisting how that's planned and promoted in the city. We'll also be working very soon to facilitate the transition of ownership of the Rec Center to the city. I think that's actually coming before you this week at your council meeting. And if all goes according to plan, the Rec Center will become part of the city's real asset portfolio as of July one. Something that we've been doing a lot of work on as we approach August, when the hospital is going to be officially moving out of the city, is advocating for the repurposing of that campus. There are a lot of conversations going on between a number of staff members and other stakeholders at the hospital, and the county, and others that, about what could happen at that site. It's a major opportunity, it presents a challenge for the city, of course, but it's a major opportunity as well. We'll continue working with the business associations, the OTBA and the CDA and Tacoma Langley, and we'll continue to advocate for a Buy County focus on New Hampshire improvements. That was one of your legislative priorities this year, has been in the past, and it's a major area of focus for our staff, especially now that we have an Economic Development Manager on board. And we're going to continue facilitating ongoing cultural arts programings, programming. And one area where there's a slight increase in FTEs is we hope to increase the part-time hours for our Arts Coordinator by a little bit. There's a lot going on, and we could really use the additional few hours a week in that position. And we've got the Community Development Managers for Planning, Housing and Economic Development here to answer questions at the end of the presentation. I'm guessing that there could be some that you have for them. For the library, we're going to continue providing the excellent services that we've been providing, especially for a relatively small municipal library. It's amazing what you see when you go into the library at any time that it's open. We will continue undertaking our outreach measures in underserved parts of the city, including encouraging folks to get library cards, helping them check out materials, conducting programs geared toward literacy and demonstrating new digital resources. The programming that is put on in the library is amazing. It's unbelievable the caliber of presenters that they have regularly, whether it's graphic artists, graphic novel artists, or young adult, famous young adult authors, really some big names, and we often have standing room only in the very small space that we have to host those programs. To that end, we're going to continue to develop refined support plans and prep for the new library space to include temporary relocation of our programs and services, collections, computers, all of that stuff. This year, we were pleased to learn that we'd received another hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond from the state in library construction, bringing the total up to three hundred thousand dollars. You know, that's a recognition of the importance of our municipal library in Tacoma Park for our residents, and in particular, the youth in our community. We'll continue reviewing and evaluating our collections and refining them as trends change in library services. And we'll continue utilizing our Computing Learning Center to conduct workshops in underserved parts of the city. You know, there's a shift in a lot of places towards digital resources, and we're riding that wave and making changes where appropriate. Where's that one? Ms. Robbins, did you want to speak to anything?
I can, you've mentioned a lot, and I can.
Okay, yeah, if you want to say a word or two, that'd be great. I gloss the surface only, I know.
Despite reduced funding for many of our basic services, we intend to continue the provision of nearly all of them in fiscal year twenty. This means we will buy print books for adults and children, offer digital resources such as Hoopla with its offerings of music books, audiobooks and films, provide language instruction through Pronunciator, and continue the many other streaming and downloadable resources that are free with a Tacoma Park library card. We are pleased to be able to provide these services, as well as programs for all ages, including author programs, book discussions, class visits, and early literacy programs seven days a week in the library. As we begin to prepare for renovation and temporary relocation of many collections, we plan to extend our services outside the library walls, as Jason said. We are able to issue library cards, check out books, conduct children's programs, demonstrate our digital resources, and offer one-on-one assistance in using them in different neighborhoods. Computer center staff can give one-on-one assistance in updating older Windows laptops and setting up apps on phones or iPads. Race equity is a topic of great interest and relevance in library, public library literature. Workshops and conferences focus on the many ways in which public libraries, which have always been committed to providing a level playing field, can serve the needs of immigrants and LGBTQ populations. The Tacoma Park Library has always been fortunate in serving a diverse constituency. We offer programs in Spanish and French, music from the West African diaspora, and the Library Friends began a book club for immigrant families just this year. And tonight, in the library, we are hosting a panel discussion on teens in immigrant communities, featuring two authors and representatives from Ayuda and Casa. Literature, our literature abounds with books for teens and young children about racial identity and the immigrant experience. Adult authors from many countries are being recognized and widely published in the United States. All of which is to say that as a public library, we are proud to serve and continue to educate ourselves on the needs and interests of all Tacoma Park residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robbins. You said it much better than I did. Keep hitting the wrong button. Moving on to communications, we're going to continue improvements to the content and usability of our website. We're going to continue enhancing the way that we use social media and our City TV YouTube channel and our television channel, as well as the newsletter to provide our residents and business owners with information about the services that the city provides, local issues and events that we put on. We hope to protect our interests in franchise negotiations, which are going to be before us again here soon. Those are very important these days as more folks are cutting the cord and we're realizing less, fewer dollars from cable providers through our franchise agreements. And we're going to continue to increase our non-English programming and written materials to inform residents of city services. I was flipping through my Facebook the other day, and I saw this program that City TV was putting on right here with French speakers, and I know that there is a new Amharic show, a show that will be in Amharic in the works. So, we're trying to, in various ways, reach a broader audience of our community. We continue to infuse racial equity work and considerations in everything that we do. The fiscal year twenty budget includes funds to continue our work on racial equity through implementation of the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan, which we hope will help expand access to assistance for small businesses, you know, broaden the affordable housing opportunities in the city and benefit many people of color in the community. We continue to provide community grants and partnerships. We'll have more racial equity training for both staff and members of council-appointed boards and committees. And in fact, later this week, you'll be hearing from the person who facilitated the recent What's My Bias training. I think that's happening on Wednesday. Continued improved community policing. Flower Avenue, Green Street and library renovation projects are expected to be beneficial to everybody in the community and, in particular, residents of the community who are people of color. And various other programs geared toward providing opportunities and assistance to people of color, and that, again, is something that'll be happening throughout the departments of the city, the Rec Department, the library, the Police Department, et cetera. We're going to continue to provide the community grants and partnerships and other assistance that we have been historically. Regarding the funds for community grants, a few things worth noting. This year's proposed budget includes sixty thousand dollars, and we increased that from the forty thousand dollars that was included in last year's budget. But it's important to note that that is down from previous years, when it was eighty thousand dollars or more, I believe. It is, it is very important that we remain, that we maintain funding in the community grants program. It would be great if Council wanted to put more money into the community grants program as part of the reconciliation process, especially if there are decisions made to cut some of the services that the city is providing directly, that we could rely on community partners to provide or help offset. This year, we, it's also worth noting that we saw a significant increase in the number of applicants for our community grant funds, as well as increased diversity in the types of programs and services provided by the potential grantees. We'll be speaking to that a little bit more next week, but it's really an impressive group of organizations that reflect, as I mentioned, a lot of diversity, not only in the types of programs that they provide, but they also are geared towards the diverse, the diversity in our community. We'll continue to provide the emergency assistance services that we currently provide. We rely on a third party to take applications and vet eligibility for those funds. We will continue to have twenty-five thousand dollars in the Emergency Tree Removal Fund, and we budgeted for, as I mentioned earlier, the same community events and the same amounts as we have in previous years. The Fourth of July, the Independence Day Festival, we have twenty-five thousand dollars for, the Folk Festival, twenty thousand dollars for, Celebrate Tacoma, twelve thousand dollars, and there's miscellaneous festival support and the amount of ten thousand dollars, where we contribute some funds to other, to support other festivals. Something we don't talk about a lot or quantify, but we did a thought experiment related to Independence Day only, but we determined that we spend about seventeen thousand dollars in overtime for just the Independence Day event. So, where there may be opportunities for cost saving, one opportunity for cost savings could be to consolidate or combine some of the events that we currently put on, and I think with the circumstances regarding the field that we typically use for the fireworks and the fact that we're going to have to be doing something different this year, it could be an opportunity to try not only a firework-free Independence Day festival because, largely because of lack of an opportunity to have fireworks this year, but we may be able to combine something else with, with the new plan for Independence Day, whatever that new plan looks like. There's twelve thousand dollars in the budget for the Commemoration Commission, and that is for, is it one plaque or two plaques? We don't know.
It's, I believe it's for the plaque, the Lee Avenue plaque, and also for a plaque at Hefner.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Carpenter. That's an important distinction. I had a question earlier this evening from someone who had noticed that in the budget, and they said that they thought that the point of the commemorative, or the plaques was going to be that people, it was offset by costs paid by people who wanted to commemorate someone, and I knew that this was different, but I wasn't sure specifically what it was for. And we've, we're going to continue to supplement the state's tax rebate program. I think last year, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was budgeted in that line. This year, we've increased it very slightly to a hundred and fifty-two thousand. And moving on to some of the major special capital projects that are adding to the fiscal year twenty expenditures that are higher than in previous years. One is the Flower Avenue, Green Street project. We wrapped up Ethan Allen this year. We hope that the Flower Avenue, Green Street project kicks off very, very soon and is completed within the next year plus a few months. Hopefully, it's completed in fiscal year twenty. We'll pay down over four million dollars on that project. A number of, many of the dollars are being provided from outside sources through grants, the TAP grant, WSSC grants, CDBG funds, and then we have significant expenses to the city as well. And moving to the library renovation and expansion project, and I believe the city manager is going to speak to this sum, we plan to spend about eight hundred thousand dollars in the next fiscal year. That will be used primarily for detailed design work and preparing the site for demolition of the existing building and reconstruction. Before that's done, we, as you know from a recent presentation, have some improvements that need to be made to mitigate floodplain issues that have come to bear. It's worth noting, again, that we've received about three hundred thousand dollars in bond bill funds from the state to help out with this project. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to Ms. Lublo.
I left my paper upstairs, so I will do this off the top of my head, and I will send it out to you. I just wanted to go over a couple of I just wanted to go over a couple of the issues that have been raised about the library and, and sometimes seems like each time I talk to somebody, somebody raises the cost by a million dollars or something of the project. And I, I want to directly speak to that. The first is that the total cost of the project, the actual construction, is $6.3 million with about $750,000 worth of, plus, in addition to that, about $750,000 worth of detailed design work and about $150,000 to demolish the existing building so that the floor can be raised, would keep the mosaic. The, then there would be about $500,000 worth for the furnishings that go in the project. In addition to those fees, those costs, there's some, we'll wait to get a little bit more information and we'll see what the designs come back to some possibilities for, within the community center that are, but the library. A reconfiguration of the recreation department so that the main window serves the main hallway as opposed to the little side hallway and refurbishing the bathrooms in the city building because we're actually low on bathroom space per state code, and so we want to make sure that we upgrade those. The, there would be some improvements outside. There'd be the entrance to both the library and the main entrance to, from the parking lot into the community center would be redesigned as part of the library construction price. That will also help reduce the rain, any rainwater that comes into this building off of the back parking lot, which has been an issue. It needs some regrading and, so that will all be part of that project. Other than that, the, one of the questions that gets raised is what does this mean in terms of resiliency for this building and for the library? And should it be moved, should the library move to another location? It's very important to, anytime we're looking at big-ticket issues, to think about that. Is this the right place? Is this the right time? And we've looked at it before, but it's always a good thing to reconsider and to look at the various prices. One of the things that I feel very good about is that the floodplain map and study that was done showed that simply by raising the floor, we could have a very usable, resilient building. And that is something that allows us to continue to use the site for a long time. One of the things that's nice about this site, particularly for the library, is that it serves Maple Avenue well and it serves three schools well. And you simply don't get that location, that size of a location somewhere else. Because you have the library and the community center attached, you get to share a lot of the infrastructure that goes to the, whether it's parking, utilities, IT lines, security, all of those kinds of things. And so it makes sense to have them together. It's an efficiency to have them together. To move to another location, we would have to have control of that other location. If we got it for free and we built a brand-new building, just a library, we're talking at least $20 million. If you do a combined building, this is off the seat pant version, we're talking $45 to $60 million. And we do not have the bonding capacity to borrow money for that kind of a building. Also, if we were to move and say, gee, we're moving, no one would want to buy this property because they would wonder what's wrong with it. And obviously, it would be one of those things where we wouldn't then, we would end up with basically a vacant lot here and not something that's, that's usable from a community basis or to offset the costs. So it's good to think it through. It's good to look at that. I'll send you all of the detailed information that I've gathered. But I appreciate this, the chance to think back through all of the details and what does that get us. I really do, I also look around the city and there's not almost any other site that isn't affected by floodwaters when we have these longer-lasting storms from climate change. So any construction has to be, to be able to withstand these waters. One of the things that's kind of fortunate about this location is that frankly, the water mostly goes around it when it comes down the hills and it goes down Maple Avenue towards Sligo Creek. And so part of it is just how do you design to cut that corner with the water going around? This isn't a situation where the floodwaters come up. They don't come up from Sligo Creek. They don't pool. It's, it's a, it's a different kind of, of a flood. One of the things that we will have, I think probably in May, is a presentation from some of the experts on how floodplains are identified and designed and, and evaluated for building design. And I think that'll be really helpful for everybody to think about this because it's going to affect all of us in every one of our locations if it doesn't already. I do appreciate we've had, in terms of looking at what the cost of the library is, we've had a professional estimator who does that, come, you know, double-check the numbers for the architect. What happens in, as this process goes forward, the detailed designs will continue to be refined, they'll be brought to the, back to the council. Generally, there's, the estimator, professional estimator reviews those plans again to come back and say what they think that amount would be. We may want to make some changes at that point when we hear that, but we won't know the real numbers till it goes out to bid and we start to get the bids back. When the bids come back, then it's another decision point for the council about, is this the right amount? Do you want to phase something in? Is there, or does it make sense? And one of the things that I feel very strongly about is sticking to the budget. We have been very good at sticking to the budget in the last few projects that we have built for two reasons. One is we're, do the good work upfront to get good estimates and to vet the plans. We also will be hiring a construction management consultant on behalf of the city. We've done that for the Phase Two and Three of the community center, for the auditorium, for the Public Works Department. I know I oversaw the renovation of this auditorium, which was on budget. And part of the reason it was on budget is the construction manager was diligent about looking at the architect's plans, the construction details, the bid package, the response to the bid package, and any change order invoice, scrutinizing those so that even though there's an additional cost to have one of those construction managers, we save money because the plans make sense. There's not oversight. There's somebody with construction eyes on our behalf here on site, and then they can catch errors in invoices and, and can negotiate change orders. I, I am looking forward to this project. I think it will be a wonderful addition to the city. I'll send you this information, we'll have some follow-up details. But there aren't extra things that need to be done to this site besides what I've just identified that keep the site safe from floodwaters in the future. So I think it will be a good project.
Thank you. So looking ahead, we're going to have the first public, budget public hearing on Wednesday night, and on April 15th, we'll have an additional budget open house and work session focused on options for service and program reductions. That is going to, both of those will be taking place at the Tacoma Park Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue. I actually meant to, sorry? Yes, I meant to delete.
We're not meeting on that April 22nd.
We have, we are, we are pushing the April 22nd work session and will be, the, the one marked tentative on April 29th is going to be when the actual work session date is. So I need to cross off April 22nd. The budget and constant yield tax rate public hearings will be on the 24th. Again, there, there will be a work session on the 29th, and that will be back here in the auditorium. And then the first and second reading ordinances are on May 8th and the 15th. Those will adopt the, the budget and the tax rate. Just a little, a few words on next week, the budget work session, as I mentioned, is going to focus on the costs of individual programs and services and provide council with an opportunity to discuss potential budget reduction options. It's important to note that if we're going to make longer-term sustainable budget reductions or adjustments, we need to be focused on the services and programs that we provide and where we, where we can eliminate some things, rather than looking at just one-time cost savings where we could reduce a certain big dollar amount or defer something down the road a, a year or two. If, if we're, you know, serious about either reducing the, the tax rate that's been proposed to maintain the level of services and programs that we have, then there's only one answer to that, and that's to eliminate some of the services and programs that we provide. And I only note that because, you know, we really want council members to be thinking about that during the next week before the next budget work session because we're going to be providing you with a menu, basically, of different, of the costs of different services. And if there are questions that you have, if there are things that we do that you're curious what the costs are, please let us know. And if they're not already on the list that we're putting together, we'll make sure that they're on there.
And, and two other things. The first is that part of this will be also some information from me about what I think is acceptable to be cut. I mean, there are certain things you can't cut. You can't cut debt. We owe it. There's some other kinds of things that, that may not pay off well. And so I can, I can share that as we go through the programs and services. As you go through that and you think about what you want or don't want for the April 29th budget work session, that would be reconciliation night. So anything that you're looking at in terms of adds and subtractions, we need to know pretty early on so that we can be prepared for that April 29th discussion and go through the, go through that process. It will be on April 29th that you establish the tax rate. And so for folks who are interested in commenting on any of your pluses or minuses, they really need to do that at either the budget hearing next, on Wednesday, or on the 24th.
All right. I thank you.
That will open the floor for questions for either the city manager or me or anybody from the senior leadership team or the HCD community development managers.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. And before we start, questions from the council? I would just like to check with, if there's anyone on the desk that is an NCAA basketball fan?
Oh, so, so the deputy city manager didn't mention that he's from UVA.
Yeah, oh, that tie just happened to me.
He's a UVA grad, so.
All right. Let's begin in, with any questions? It, well, appears nobody has any questions, so.
You can email them to us, that's fine.
Who wants to hit the button first? Ms. Kostick?
All right, I'll go first. Mine are very disorganized here, so I'll try to keep them somewhat organized. One of the questions I sent ahead of time was regarding, it's a question I've gotten from a number of people, and it's, it's more of a big-picture question, regarding the, what looks like a budget that is not balanced. Can you explain the, trying to pull up the number here?
Basically.
The 20, the difference, about 4.4 million, I think, between the revenues and expenditures.
Basically, that shows the difference between the expenditures, which is the higher number, and the revenues, which is the lower number by about $4 million. So then the remainder does come from unappropriated, which is basically from the reserve. And that's, one of the things we were talking about, and we'll, I'll check with our finance director over the next, probably for next year, is kind of specifying that out almost as a line item, so it's very clear that that's what that is. It's essentially a use of, of reserves to make the budget balanced. One of the things when I was looking over the past few years is that we've been very fortunate in some respects that some of the larger projects have slipped in time, so we had those revenues, but it's getting smaller and smaller and we, our reserves are now, are now much tighter.
A point of clarification on that? So is that, when you say you're relying on reserves, do you mean taking money out of existing reserve funds or putting in less than is the recommended?
It's the same thing.
Well, to me, they're different.
Let me confer with my budget director and actually write that back to you because I want to be very clear about how to specify it.
Thank you.
My other question is, so if the difference is, I can't remember if it was 4.1 or 4.4 million.
4.4.
Is it, it's 4.4. And we are putting in 3.1, are we essentially losing 1, 1 million?
No, that's, that's in, that's, that's in addition. That's different. It's not losing. It's not taking one from the other.
Okay. Okay, it, it will be helpful, yeah, if you can write up a full description of that.
Right, we're, we're actually, I mean, one of the things, one of the many things that we're doing is, is preparing the answers to the questions that you've emailed to us so that you have it all in a written format and you can all look at that.
Okay. Then I had a couple of questions regarding the recreation department specifically. I know you probably don't have these figures offhand, but I would be interested, well, you can still come up because I do have a couple of questions you probably do know the answers to. I would be interested in getting a sense of the people who participate in different recreation programs in terms of demographics, what is their general income, race and ethnicity, age, some of that information so we can have a sense of who these programs are serving. And then I'm also looking at the price for things like off, before and aftercare. And I'm wondering, related to that question, how those prices are determined and what the goals are with those prices? Because I'm, I, I have kids and I, you know, I'm familiar with before and aftercare costs, and these are very inexpensive programs. So I'm just, I want to make sure that we are targeting that at groups that benefit the most from having those inexpensive programs.
Right. I'll start off with the, the first question in regards to the demographics. Currently, our electronic registration system, we only capture a little bit, a little bit of information. We don't capture things, when, when we first initially set the system up, we were told that once we set it up, that, you know, you couldn't go back and change certain things. And this was something that we discussed prior, before the council on certain things that we would include in the, you know, as far as the questions. And at that particular time, the current council didn't want us to ask things such as race and things of that nature on, as part of the system. We can capture, of course, age, we can capture male, female, of course, capture address and things of that nature. One of the things that we are planning to do is go back to the software company and find out, is there a way to go and add certain questions and things like that as part of the system? Which we will see, should be able to have an answer shortly in regards to that. But with me knowing the system, because of the, we have, I want to say, close to 14,000 or 15,000 names of individuals there, how would we go back and capture all of the information for all of those folks? So it may be an opt-in question that we can add, but we, we, we'll be able to go back and get more information and find out how can we capture some of the demographics that we need to capture. One of the things that we did do, which was not too long ago, about a month or so ago, which is add different gender options to the system, so now there are more gender options available for residents to choose.
People have already taken advantage of that.
Yes, people have already taken advantage of it, so. As far as our aftercare, and I, this is in general for all of our, pricing for all of our programs. One of the things that we wanted to do with our programs was make sure that residents can afford them. And that's, you know, and that's, of course, true as well with our after-school program. When I, when I first arrived, our after-school program was, I want to say it was about 900 bucks for a year. And of course, we've, you know, incremented, incrementally increased it. And I believe that we actually have And I believe that we actually have the best after-school program, even, you know, we have the, one of the cheapest around. And that's something that, you know, we pride ourselves in, is making sure that we keep it affordable, so that all residents can participate and can afford it.
One of the, one of the things is that often for the scholarships, if you show that you're on free and reduced meals, or whatever, you can get the scholarships. Many people who are above that level but still have difficulty paying for the programs, you know, are uncomfortable sharing income information and that kind of thing. So I think we have erred on the side of less expensive, and that does come from a decision by council, but it can be changed.
And so in terms of deciding the fees, is that something that is a part of, I'm not necessarily saying we should be or shouldn't be, but is that a part of the budgeting process, or is that something that is separate, a separate consideration?
As far as deciding fees, like, this is, I want to say, the first time since I've been here that we've taken a look at all of, all of our fees all around. And, you know, what we do is go out and compare to other recreation departments, you know, other services and things like that, to make sure that, you know, we're within the ballpark of, you know, similar entities. And that's how we decide our, you know, some of our fees for our programs. Now with, as the city manager mentioned, with our smaller programs, we do offer a scholarship opportunity, which is very easy to get into, and that's, you know, if you're on the free and reduced meals program, then, you know, you get, you know, the program for half-price. And we also, for our larger programs, like our aftercare program and our summer camp programs, there's a income-based system that we use to qualify folks for those, and where you can qualify for up to 70, 50, and 20% reductions in the fee.
And it would be interesting to get a sense of how many, I know you probably don't have the numbers right now, but if we could get a sense following up on how many people do receive the scholarships or do receive those reductions.
Oh, sure, we have that.
It would be, I think it would be useful to get that information.
Yes, we have that.
Okay. Great, thank you very much. Let me see if I have any other. I don't know if I'm remembering this correctly or not, but I thought at the last session, this is an HCD question, probably, I'm not sure for which, which one of you. I thought that I remembered seeing something about there possibly being a drop in the amount of work that would be outreach to not, businesses that are not a part of OTBA or the CDA. Am I remembering that correctly, or is that?
So I believe that in the amount that we were looking at providing to OTBA and to the CDA, that we would reduce the amount by $5,000 each. So that was, that was one of the areas where we sat around a table and we went through multiple times doing cost-cutting, and this was an area that we felt made some sense because of the additional capacity within staff to have some discussions with business owners.
I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Searsi?
Hello, everyone. So, actually, I guess, trying to get folks to anticipate the future, predict the future a little bit. So talked about that WA transition will happen August, right? So does this proposed budget account for, like, does it automatically mean that once they transition out, they go onto the roles? Like, how is that accounted for?
So it's not, and I don't think that that will happen within this, within the fiscal year '20. The proposal for the hospital is that the acute care inpatients move August 25th. But many of the other, a number of other patients in the rehab beds, or in some of the, some of the folks in the doctor's offices, won't be out of the campus until, like, June of 2020. So essentially, the vacating of the, of the campus, with the exception of the urgent care, will kind of be rolled out over time through FY '20. But certainly, we recognize that an enormous amount of staff time is involved in working about what the impacts of this are and how to craft the best answer for Tacoma Park.
So just so that I understand, it basically means that until their last patient is out, then they don't transition onto our roles?
So, so there's two different kinds of points. When it comes to tax money, that comes, has more to do with if it's a nonprofit use. And so certainly, while it's a hospital-owned and active use, it falls, and it's not, it's a not-for-profit hospital, it falls into that category. Once, if it's just some medical offices left, then it should be starting to pay tax, pay taxes. The, sometimes it might have to do with ownership, because if a nonprofit or a government agency buys it, then we might not get tax money from it. We're watching that very carefully. We're also watching other properties, such as John Evans Andrews School property, et cetera, to make sure that they're on the tax rolls.
And then the land swap, and the additional resources that we receive from the county for?
For the rec center.
For the rec center. So is the expectation, or have we had conversations with county staff in terms of whether or not there's, like, a transition fiscal year with those resources, or is it going to be the case that, once we acquire the property, the, the resources that we typically would receive from the county stop?
We have not gotten any indication that the resources would stop, and we're anticipating receiving those funds.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And that's all?
I think so. You make it up round.
No? I think we didn't understand, but no. Councilmember DeBaal?
Yes, thank you. I have a bunch of more detailed questions that, rather than bore everybody tonight, I'll just write them down and send them in. But I did want to ask a couple of questions. The first one has to do with the police budget. And I noticed, in going through it, that, that there's a fairly large number for overtime. I also note that you've made some real efforts to bring that down, so that, in terms of scheduling, or however you are going about it. And that's what I'd like to ask, is what's your approach to managing overtime and making sure that number doesn't get out of control?
Good point. A lot of it had to do with the fact that we're fully staffed now. A lot of our overtime expenditures last year were due to the fact that we were not fully staffed. We continuously assess where our staffing levels are and where our needs are, and that's why you saw the reduction, because of the, the fact that we're fully staffed. We don't need as much backfill for overtime.
Okay, great. Okay, keep going with somebody else?
You can finish out if you're.
Yeah.
So I assume you're done with me?
Well, I am. Do you?
Okay, no, go ahead. We're doing it by council member, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The second is a, is a question for, for Public Works, and I noticed that this, and I think you mentioned, that the sustainability budget, the program or operating part of it, is about, is cut by about a third compared to last, this year that we're in. And having, we have just declared a climate change emergency, the Committee on Environment recommended an increase in the budget, not a decrease, for a whole bunch of reasons, starting, including wanting to be ready to roll as soon as we get recommendations on, on programs, and not wait another half a year to have some funds to work with. I wanted to see what your thinking was on that.
Sure. Well, it wasn't my original plan.
Well, maybe I asked in the wrong person.
It was as a result of trying to reduce, you know, get our budget to a point, though our Suzy was able to present it. So the, the kind of reductions that the sustainability budget sustained was a loss of some intern dollars. Also, we had 19,000 originally planned for new programming that was eliminated, and we shaved off some rebate funds. A great deal of our funding now goes to offset and rebate commercial multifamily and low and moderate income renovations. So we reduced residential rebates by $5,000, and we reduced commercial rebates by $10,000. We had a budget of 30, it's been reduced to 20, so we still maintain funds there. We've had some difficulty getting traction in that regard, so rather than leave money on the table, we dropped it down.
Boiler program in particular, yeah. Okay, well.
And if I can just mention, I mean, there's not a department that didn't take some cuts, and things that they were really very concerned about. What we really looked at, as Ms. Bray mentioned, is areas where we weren't sure we could actually spend all of the funds that we were thinking of, so kind of rightsizing those funds. We cut a lot of requested interns' positions, and we, you know, lots of professional development and those kinds of things. So I think any of the, any of the department heads can give you information about essential information, essential programs that they really wanted that they cut.
Yeah, I was just struck by the size of this compared to some of the others that I noticed. My last question for tonight, well, two, two more. One is, Jason talked about the $152,000 for the state homeowners' tax credits. And so I, I've been thinking a lot about what other possibilities there are for targeting those folks that are most in need, and that's a great start. I have two questions, I think. So, three. Does that include the state renters' tax credit, or is that only?
It does, it does this, it's matched the renters' as well.
Okay. And then we talked last week about, about ways to, to target, so can we consider extending other state and county tax credit programs to city taxes? There are, on the city flyer that we did last year, there's four different programs. So there's no answer for this, but I want to put it out to people that, that, can we look at what that, can we, can we look at that? What would that look like to be able to apply that same logic to a couple of the other programs? And whether logistically we can do that in this tax cycle? This might be a longer-term question. But that's my second question, is can we do it in this tax cycle? And then my third question had to do with the legal, the legal underpinnings, and I did, for those of you who've been tracking this, did get a response from the city attorney about what we can and can't do legally, because we are limited in some ways. But I'd like to call everyone's attention to the possibility that we could do this and find a time when we can talk about this issue.
I think, I think next week would be.
Of a very, very limited, very targeted relief that's tagged to programs that already exist.
Yeah, I think certainly we can talk about it next week, and I think the, and for, and during reconciliation. Partly, it's identifying how much money you would want to put. One of the issues with the existing programs, and this is the area that has been difficult for me to, to get my thoughts around, are that many of the folks are, who are, many of the folks who, people have expressed interest in trying to help, don't meet the criteria for the homeowner's program, or the program that you had to be in your house for 40 years as the owner, that kind of thing.
Right, and that would be, that would be a piece of it.
And so the more that you change the criteria, then you have to figure out what should be the criteria, and how is it evaluated, and who evaluates it. And, and you don't know how many people it might affect. And part of what we've tried to do is identify where we thought there might be an issue, try to really look through these tax assessment maps that we've got, trying to get a sense of it.
Yeah, that was, that was great, great work there.
I still don't have it, I still don't quite have it, but I'm, I'd like to continue to work with you on, on trying to identify if there is a segment that makes sense, and what kind of money impact that might be for you to consider as part of the reconciliation.
Yeah, I just want to park the thought that it's something we want to, we want to come back to. And I did have one last question on personnel.
The third of two?
The fourth of three?
Okay.
Okay, so I'll make it quick. This is probably something to get back to us on. Personnel costs overall is a big part of the budget, and again, this is a longer-term question, not just one for tonight, but what are the ways that we can get a handle on that? One question I had going through is, I noticed over and over that a department had reduced their operating expenses, and had, but they had, they were locked into increasing salaries, wages, benefits, fringes. So are there guidelines, for example, on conferences and recognitions, so that it is, that everyone's doing it the same way? Are there guidelines on salary increases, everyone's doing the same way?
Oh, absolutely.
Can you get, can you get some of that to us?
Sure, we'll get it to you in writing, but certainly, we have, we're, we're very systematic about what we do for paying staff. We do compensation and classification studies, so we compare our positions versus our competitor positions, which are municipalities that are right around us. We also take into consideration what the counties pay for that, recognizing that we can't keep up with the counties. We look at what our benefits are vis-à-vis our competitors as well. We have traditionally used the employment cost index as the increased amount for salaries that kind of go into our charts for working with, as we negotiate with our unions. And we have very minimal step increases. I was, I was impressed, in a way, with what the county's proposing, which were 2.4% wage increases on top of 3.5% step increases. And if you didn't get a step increase, you got a flat $1,000, $1,200 extra. And I, I mean, that's not, that's not a kind of increase that we could keep up with. So we don't, we're careful, and we, we try to pick very carefully what the right salary is for the various positions, so that we can continue to attract employees and retain employees once they're here. It is, so it is very systematic, and some of this, obviously, is confidential, and, you know, as we go through our negotiations with our labor unions, we can share that with the council in a closed session. But I think we've been very good about being careful and systematic about these processes, so that it's fair, it's obvious to employees what, what we pay, and it's transparent. We put a lot of the information on the website. We mostly keep up with the, with the wages. In our last study, which is still not finalized, but we got preliminary information, there were a couple positions that were paid too low, and gee, those are areas where we were having trouble attracting staff, so there might be a reason that we needed to adjust those, those couple positions. I'm sorry?
It would be nice, sorry. It would be nice to know at some point what those are. Thank you.
Sure. The other thing is that when it comes to the processes of compensation, for other kinds of employee compensation, we have a minimal December gift card. I think it's $30 gift card, is part of our standard benefit. We give them to employees and to volunteers and a variety of folks. And we also have some payments when somebody hits a milestone, a five-year, 10-year, 15-year. So we have a whole schedule for those. So it's not haphazard by department, it's, it's a fairly systematic approach that we're real careful about, and we analyze each year.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. Excuse me. Couple of things that you already talked, I just mentioned briefly on the reserves. I think there's still, I know you're going to send us some more information, I think there's still a little bit of uncertainty there, because based on what Councilmember Kostic was saying, the difference in the reserve amount, and the ideal reserve amount is different from the split in the, between the revenue that's coming in and the expenditures. So I think we just need to get a clarification. The one thing I wasn't clear on, and maybe you could add this in what you sent to us, was with the percentage for the reserves, and we're shooting for 17, and we're below that now, what that is calculated is based on, because I was doing 17% of various totals, and I never quite had it turn out right, so.
It's based on the general fund revenues.
General fund revenues?
17%. 17% of general fund revenues.
Which, which is the target, but we're not at that in this.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. And on the library, thank you for all the information, it sounds like you're going to send us some more about that, too. The one question, though, that you can, if you can answer, even without the actual number right now, my recollection was, and I might be wrong about this, that included within that proposed construction amount that you mentioned, which of course may change once, once bids go out, that there was also built in some escalator amount just to reflect the fact that costs are unpredictable.
Yeah, there's contingency funds in there, and it's, and it's estimated, when the estimator does it, he or she recognizes that it's not to be built better. not to be built that day. So there's a sense about that it's an outer year that they're estimating for.
So you take an amount, and then you, for example, add 10, or 15, or 20% to it, or whatever, and that's the amount?
Right.
That becomes the construction.
They're very careful about that.
So you'll include that in whatever you send.
Sure.
Okay. So on the staff sheet, I noticed, and I don't know whether Mr. Dan Weber or Ms. Ludl or someone else should answer this, but in the personnel overview, which is, I believe it's the third page of this presentation, so it looks like most of the different categories, general government, public works, recreation, housing, communication, libraries, stormwater, really, speed camera, all of those, when you look at the last five years, the increase, and in one case, the decrease, over that whole period, is one FTE or less, with the exception of police. Does that, does that look like that's correct to you?
Yes, we've been very careful.
So the police, it looks like it went up by five or six positions, but I thought you had said at one point, and I don't know whether you-
Well, there was the-
There was something that was maybe off about that, that number?
So the first was that the neighborhood services team was created in the police department, moving people from HCD-
Right.
-to the police department and adding a position. And so that made a difference. So, there's also, I will say that-
You mean that they weren't sworn officers being added at that?
Yeah, this isn't, this is reflecting all, all positions, not just sworn officers. Yeah.
How many sworn officers?
We're at 42?
Forty-three.
Forty-three sworn officers.
So just a few other things from the presentation, but I thought that was interesting, that the police is the only one that's actually had a substantial shift to more than one FTE in, in either direction. So I didn't understand what the, the new funds for the enterprise content management system was. I know it's not a big amount, but I didn't, I didn't quite-
I'll turn over to Mr. Dan Weber.
I didn't quite get that. Can you, can you try again?
IT language.
Basically, that's, it's hard to explain. It's, it's more than a document management system. It's a system that can be used to receive applications online. It can be used for, for document management, so that we can move away from all the paper that we're using in HR and-
So it's a digital information management system for lots of things we do.
Correct, but, but it can also be used for things like online training and learning, so people can, it can document people logging in and having taken a course. It can be used to replace a lot of the functionality of MyTKPK, for example. So it can be used to report issues. Many times, they cost more than $20,000, but we're, we're, you know, going to be looking at options to replace a few of the things that we're using right now to do. You know, we spend something like $14,000 a year on our rental housing software that is designed for, specifically for us. We spend something like $6,000 on GovQA. We have a number of systems used for, as I mentioned before, applications, seamless docs. All these add up to be significantly more than $20,000. And our IT, our information systems director, our IT manager, is really interested in taking all, a look at, a comprehensive look at all of the different ways we, we do these things and consolidating them. And we believe that not only will it streamline the work itself, but it'll end up saving us a good amount of money in the long run, too.
Okay. Thank you, that's helpful. That makes more sense than I thought before. You mentioned that the, the staff person or the 0.5 FTE, or whatever the number was going to be, the fraction was going to be, for the traffics, for the parking citations and so on, would, if, if the person was dedicated, would bring in more than that cost. So how does that show up in the budget? Is that a-
So it's increased the-
A net gain for the, for the general fund, or is it two separate pots of money?
It shows as a net gain in the general fund. It shows in revenues, in increased revenues.
Yeah, I believe the net gain in the budget is about 35, between 35 and 40,000.
But then if that person would stay and be full-time, there's more pay, but there's also more, you hope, more parking until they scare off everybody and everybody starts following the law?
Right. The problem that we've had so far is that the halftime evening position has not been, nobody wants it.
Yeah.
So partly, we need to, in order to actually have this job filled, need to move to a full-time position. That does allow for us to do that. One of the things we noticed in the resident survey was a lot of complaints that there wasn't enough parking enforcement. Now, that's until you get a ticket, I get that, but it is something that, you know, when I was really trying to decide very minimally what should go in in terms of staffing, this is one which, between the identification and the resident survey and the, the issue about, you know, getting those revenues in, it made sense to put it forward for your consideration.
And just to clarify, if I, if I might, Councilmember Kovar, what the budget reflects right now is the full-time position. So it's the, you know, 66,000 versus the $35,000 in expenses, but it also, in the revenue lines for parking citations, shows an increase, I believe, of $105,000 over last year. And that's, that's a little conservative, because we built in some time to hire for the position and train them up and, you know, get them ready to start writing tickets.
And is that with, with benefits or without?
That's with benefits.
So just a few other things. I'll run through quickly, and you can respond to them after, afterwards if you wish. On the stormwater projects, three are mentioned, I believe, Granton, Holly, Lincoln and Hancock, Manor Circle and Carroll. And maybe it's in the document, you can just point me to that later, but how much they cost, that wasn't clear just from this. And then, this is for Mr. Dan Weber, on the marketing of materials in the different languages, one of the things I thought, I've been meaning to ask you this for month after month, but I, I like the fact that on the front page of the newsletter, you have the statements in different languages, but I think they should rotate in their position so that the English one isn't always at the top. And you can-
Understood. And we're, we're moving towards providing every article and online so that they can all be translated.
But just so they see it when they look at it before they toss it.
Gotcha.
Just a couple of quick things. Thank you for, Mr. Protem indulging me. On the, on the New Hampshire Recreation Center, maybe this is more of an issue for when we talk about the land transfer later, but are we still going to be getting the, this year anyway, this coming year, the funding from the county?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that question of whether at some future point, the 85,000 or whatever it is, that's not something we have to worry about for fiscal year 2020, is basically what we're saying.
Everything that I've, everything that I've heard is that that looks like it will continue at least for another year.
Right.
So I put it in.
Okay. I'm going to let other people speak now, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. One question for HR regarding racial equity training. What is the goal? And how do we know that we have accomplished the goal once all this training has been completed?
The goal, oh, that's a tall order. So the goal is to, I guess, be able to look at the different services that the city provides to all of the residents and ensure that we are representatively providing services to the different ethnic races or whatever, socioeconomic classes, whatever it is that you want to look at. How do we know that we have reached it? I think when we provide services that actually represent who we are as a city.
So will we maintain more data points that are specifically on race? Or how, I mean, I understand what you're saying in general, that yes, we're going to say, hey, this is the right way to approach whatever the policy is. But then, are we going to say, when you apply this policy, we want, we need to know if you are black, white, Asian, whatever, and how this policy may impact you?
If I'm understanding your question correctly, I think I want to kind of repeat it to make sure I'm understanding. You want to know how we know when we've reached it?
Yes.
Or how we're going to obtain that information?
No, how do we know we've reached it?
How do we know when we've reached it? I think when we show, kind of like what I said before, when we show that if, for example, I believe, a third of our population is born outside of the United States, when we show that we are providing services to at least one-third of the residents. And it may be a case where there are services that are needed more heavily by individuals in those populations. And I think if we're able to pull the data, which has been traditionally kind of difficult for us to be able to pull that information in, when we can show that this is definitely, you know, the makeup of the residents within the city, these are the services that we're providing, and this is how the makeup looks for the individuals that we're providing those services to.
See, I just want to make sure that we're not in the same situation that has happened with the rec department.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't track race or ethnicity, so we don't know, you know, who's signing up for these programs. So if we're going to do racial equity, then we need to make sure that when or not we're just going to meetings and trainings, that when we're actually implementing this, these programs, we know that we're helping these people and more people are onboarding in this group or not.
Are you talking about HR? I'm sorry, I, I've lost a little bit. I'm just wondering if I can clarify. So is part of this about how we do hiring? Or how about each department's provide services?
Yes, each department that provides services, yeah. That's what the training is for, right?
Well, if, if I may, I, good stab, but I think all of the things that you're, you're kind of intimating, you know, all, all the places we want to go, those are the places we hope to go. We are a long way from getting to those places. And the initial step through the trainings, through our participation in the regional cohort, is really going to be so that more of our staff can begin speaking, speaking, using the same terminology about racial equity, understanding what racial equity means. We've talked, we talked about it in the retreats. We all kind of take for granted now the, the graphic that shows equality versus equity, but we have a number of staff members who haven't been exposed to training like that. You know, there's a lot of light bulbs left to go on. Once we-
Okay.
....................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
I will say this, though. One of the things that I have really appreciated is that we have a number of staff who have gone through trainings and that we've had these discussions with internally, and they call me out. They say, you know, I don't think that we should do it this way because of this under a racial equity issue. And so we have good discussions about that. That's hard to count, it's hard to report back, but I really appreciate the fact that the message is getting through to a number of staff. I think it's also going to be really, you know, part of, part of your program is the work with the county council committees. And how do they call out what they're, how they're targeting their desires and their, how they're implementing your goals with a race equity focus? And I think that that also will help call us out. I'm looking forward to that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Clark, I have just a quick question for you. Appreciate all the work that you're doing in the department. It's great to see how everything has, you know, shaped up over the number of the years. How are you guys determining which wards that you're going into the apartment buildings to establish relationships with residents? How is that coming together?
With our success program.
Yes.
Givante, the staff person, is actually reaching out to different locations in every ward. He's speaking to different residents from the ward and finding out, you know, who the go-to person would be to get into that location. And he's actually made pretty good headway into just about every ward in the city. And I can actually see if we can get a list of programs, you know, that he's doing in the different locations and send it, send it out to you guys.
Okay, I appreciate it. That's it. Thank you. Thank you for your great work.
All right, thank you.
Just a real quick question about Public Works regarding the Flower Avenue-Green Street project. It's great that we're having our meeting April 11th. I saw on the presentation that Mr. Dan Weber gave us regarding the TAP funding, that we've spent like $300,000 or some thousand dollars already?
That's assuming FY '19 funds.
Okay. And can you just tell us what that money was, was for?
Sure. Well, we anticipate starting construction April 29th, so it's assuming May and June construction, as well as the design dollars that have been spent up till now.
Okay.
So very little spending this year. Once construction starts, that's when the dollars will really add up.
Okay. And are we still anticipating covered bus shelters with the community development block grant funding?
No, the community development block grant money is going towards the sidewalk compliance work on the city side of the sidewalks. There's no funds included for shelters, other than the spaces themselves being available for shelters.
Okay. Thank you. And then my final question has to do with the FTE chart that you presented us, the 171.24. How do we reflect temps and, like, contract workers, people that we have?
They're not reflected in the FTE count. The FTE count includes part-time, full-time and part-time staff. And for example, somebody who works 25 hours a week as a part-time staff person would be reflected as 0.63 FTEs. It does not, it does not include contract staff.
Okay.
Or, 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 you know, temps who we typically get through contractual arrangements with agencies.
Do we normally do a lot of hiring of temps?
We hire part-time, well, temporary staff for, in the Recreation Department. For, for example, we hire a lot of new staff over the summer and things like that.
They don't count really as, they're not like temps, but they're part-time staff. We used to do more temp labor, but we've reduced it in the police, in the Public Works Department. We used to do temp labor for leaf collection. We've gone to a different system for that, but there's still sometimes we use temp labor for, for Public Works.
Yeah, and when, when we refer to temp labor, it's, it is, it's, it's through contracted arrangements, and the reason for that is because, and this happened in a couple of places that I've worked, you refer to people as temps who have been part-time employees or seasonal, seasonal employees for 25 years. And they're not really temps since they've done payroll for 25 years.
So we've moved away from that. We don't do that. We, we have a different system.
All right. Thank you. I don't have any more questions. Thank you. Mayor Stewart, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just one question and a comment. First, thank you everyone for the presentation, and I don't need an answer tonight.
But do we have somewhere in the budget document or at a later date, can we find out the revenue we forego for having rent stabilization in the city? That's- That's one question. And then the other, just a comment, thanking Mr. Clark for his presentation. And I just want to reiterate what some of my colleagues said regarding the collecting of data, because I do know this was a point that we also had discussed last year as well as trying to look at our racial equity work. And so I'd encourage us this year, moving forward, if we can look at how we can keep better track of who is using our services and registering and doing our programs in the city. And that's for now.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Kovar, you had a quick question?
Yes, the mayor's question just reminded me, this relates, I meant to mention it before, but there's also revenue foregone as a result of the pilots that we have. Is that a calculation that exists?
We certainly can show-
I think I've seen versions of that before.
We have the charts of that amount.
Yeah, that'd be good. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. I have just a couple of questions, but first one, don't need an answer right now, but I'm interested in the, any significant budget reductions that were in the proposed budget for the police department. And again, you can get back to me later on that. The-
Mayor Protem Siemens, we'll, as part of the materials for next week, we'll, we'll provide you guys with some information about what was cut from the original departmental proposed budgets leading to the, the recommended budget they have before you.
Great. That would be helpful. Thank you. In the Recreation Department, I think it would be helpful to have a list of the programs. I know you have a partial list here in the presentation tonight, but a, and I'm thinking of something like a single-page list of the various programs and what the expenses are for those programs, the revenues for the program, and also the goals, you know, what are the desired outcomes?
The desired outcomes of the various rec programs. Is that the one you want?
Yes, yes. And then also field maintenance. Be interested to make sure I understand the costs for field maintenance and if you have any alternative approaches that might, that you've considered.
Okay.
You mentioned on the community grants that, you know, some city programs might be better provided by privatization, and I'd be interested in your suggestions in that area of what, what particular programs you had in mind and what approach you would have for those. And then on the construction costs for the library, you mentioned the construction management. If you had a feel for how much that would cost? And, and also did the estimates that you give include contingency?
Yes. They did that, but I will get the construction management cost to you.
All right. And that's all for me. Thank you. And we'll entertain one more question.
Thank you. I went first, so now I have, I remembered the rest of my questions. I forgot to ask about Public Works, and I wanted to know in terms of the budget in the CIP for the city sidewalks and the SHA sidewalks as well as new sidewalks and traffic calming. What, what is budgeted for here in terms of projects?
We don't have a project list identified. We have, those budgets saw some loss of proposed, projected request between the original submission and, and what you see before you this evening. The funding includes $250,000 for ADA work along city sidewalks. We have a list of remaining streets, and I think we estimated it's a million and a half dollars for ADA work on sidewalks. There is a same amount for SH, yeah, for ADA work along state highways, and the plan is to do an inventory of this, state highways this year, and then based on condition, implement the ADA work on the state highways, again, based on funding. And we foresee that going for many, many years into the future. And then the new sidewalks, we actually have a, in the CIP, new sidewalks and traffic calming. So that's a, it typically is a resident request-based project, so we have funding available for those projects as they come in. We anticipate starting the Glen Side sidewalk this year, but may, you know, it may roll into FY20, so we want to make sure those funds are available for that. We have some outstanding requests that have not moved forward, Kansas Lane and the 8,000 block of Maple Avenue. And, you know, we never know exactly what's going to come in next since the way our system works is basically a resident-based request. So the, I think the CIP includes $500,000 for new sidewalk and traffic calming work. We have several projects related to new sidewalks. This year, we just finished Lincoln Avenue, of course. We hope to start Glen Side. And then the traffic calming at Flower Avenue and Sligo Creek Parkway, which has been many years in await, awaiting. We finally lined up the park permits and the planning process, and so we're hoping to break ground on that in the next month or so.
And hopefully, we will get to our priority of revising the traffic calming and new sidewalk request policies so that those can be, that can be more systematized as well. And then my very last question, and I'm not sure who this falls under, but I see the line in the CIP, Neighborhood Commercial Center Improvements for $100,000. What is that, what does that include?
Let's, let's see. That's not for, let's see.
It's under Streets and Sidewalks. Two-hundred-and-five?
Right.
Two-hundred-four, two-hundred-five?
So these are things, see, I, um, do you want to speak to this, Ms. Crispy? So we, okay, sorry. We'll get back to you, but these are the things that tend to happen when it's a mixture of like facade improvements or right-of-way improvements in front of an area as we're working on the roads or that kind of thing to help kind of address issues in different locations. And I think as we were thinking about with Purple Line and some of these other things coming in, that we may need to have some funds available to address issues during those things that come up. I will get back to you with more specifics, but I think that's what that was for.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Ludlow, did you have anything that you wanted to close with? Or Ms., Mr. Damweather, I see you hit the button.
I just wanted to request that if there wasn't a question that was answered tonight, if you could email those. And we're trying to systematically record the questions and provide answers and share them with all of you, and I want to make sure we don't miss anything.
Thank you.
And you can just email them to me and copy the city manager.
Ms. Ludlow, did you have anything else?
No, but thank you very much. And I, we will be getting these answers back to you very shortly. I know, as I said, we've assembled most of them from your previous email questions, so that should be helpful. And keep them coming. Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
And for those who are interested, I think it's two to two. We're adjourned.